Good evening and welcome to the April 26, 2021 Menlo Park Planning Commission Meeting. We start with our call to order and followed by the roll call. We have present tonight Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner DeCarty, Commissioner Cale, Commissioner Tate. I'm your Chair Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Doran, are you present tonight? We do not have Commissioner Doran yet tonight and Commissioner Kennedy will be out tonight. Alright, so we start the evening with staff reports and announcements. Our staff liaison is Corinna Sandomeyer. Good evening. Oh, Corinna, are you here tonight?
Chair Riggs, Corinna is on vacation, so you have me filling in for her tonight. Principal Planner Kyle Perata, so I'll be your commission liaison this evening, so I can start with reports and announcements if you'd like.
Thank you.
So, one thing that I think the commission would be interested in is a report out from last week's city council meeting, where the city council held a study session on the community amenities list. So there was a study session with a report out from the city council's community amenities subcommittee. And so at the meeting, the council didn't take any, any actions of the study session, but did direct staff to move forward with working on a community amenities in Lufy, which is in the ordinance, but had not been adopted. So it was in the community maintenance ordinance, but it was, it needed separate ordinance to go into effect, which had not occurred. And so we are moving forward with the drafting of an ordinance and we'll be bringing that back to the planning commission to plan for May 10th meeting, where the commission will be recommending by the city council. City council, we need to take action at two meetings, so an introduction to an ordinance and then a second reading. So with a 30-day kind of period before it becomes effective. So even moving forward, May 10th with the planning commission meeting, we're still looking at, you know, June, July before effective dates, before the effective date of the ordinance closing. Otherwise, the council did discuss the council's subcommittee's list and recognized that more outreach would be needed before moving forward with any changes to the list. So the list, the current list is still in effect pending any additional outreach and then by the council and staff before bringing back an updated community made list, with the exception of the in Lufy, which we're moving forward with now. And that concludes my reports and announcements.
Kyle, just to follow up, that that community amenities list was Exhibit A from 2016, the Connect Menlo. Is that?
Correct, yes, I should have been more clear.
I said what exhibit, but it hasn't changed since 2016.
Correct, we're talking about the list that was adopted with the general plan update, correct.
Okay. Alright, so I think that was shared a couple of weeks ago with commissioners and if not, I have it available. If any questions come up. Alright.
Excuse me, Chair Riggs, I have a question on that.
Thank you.
So, Kyle, was it reiterated that the amenities were supposed to be serving the Bellhaven community?
The council subcommittee's work did reiterate that in their letter to the council. So that is, that is something that was discussed through the subcommittee and put in writing through their letter, correct?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Tate, and thank you, Kyle. And so we will move on to our item D, which is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent calendar, which tonight are essentially minutes from March 22. Each speaker may address the commission once under the public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. So again, this would be commenting on things that are not on the agenda, but you would like to raise with the planning commission. If you would like to comment, you will look at your control panel on the right side of your screen. And I believe that would, that Zoom includes a hand icon. You can click on the hand icon and that will immediately tell staff that you would like to speak. So this would be your opportunity to do that. And at this point, I will invite Mr. Tapia, our coordinator, to to let us know if anyone is indicating a desire to speak tonight.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission and members of the public. As Chair Riggs did note, if you do have a comment, just feel free to click on that raise hand, hand feature on your screen. Otherwise, if you are listening via telephone, if you do press the star nine on your keypad, that'll also notify staff that you do have a question or comment. But at this time, Chair Riggs, I'm not seeing any virtual hands, but we can give it a second or two as usual.
Yes, especially for those, since I didn't mention the telephone earlier, thank you. Alright, if, if we don't have an item so far, I will, if we don't have interest so far, I will close the public comment period. And we will move to the consent calendar. Tonight, up for our consent are the court reporter notes for the EIR portion of the meeting and the general staff minutes for the remainder of the meeting of March 22, 2021. And I have submitted a couple of minor edits to staff and I'm also prepared to read them out. And does anyone else have either corrections to the minutes or other comment? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Prada, did you receive, I don't remember if I copied you because I would have possibly sent to Corinna, but I had edits on of a court reporter notes on page 13 and on page 54.
Yes, Chair Riggs, I did get the edits to the minutes and those, those edits can be corrected. We'll, we'll go back to the court reporter and get those taken care of.
Alright, and for the benefit. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, would you like me to just read them quickly for everyone to have them up?
Oh, I'm happy to do that. So on page 13 of the court reporter notes, line 21, there's a reference to the EMR, which I do believe was meant to be a reference to BMR, sure, below market rate units. And on page 54, line eight, there was an exchange between myself and planner Bagat. And the, I believe the court reporter omitted the change of speaker. And line eight is planner Bagat speaking. These are minor edits, but since we went to the trouble to have a court reporter and they become part of a state document, I thought I would correct them. So those are the only items. And if I can have a motion to approve our court reporter notes and minutes for March 21, this would be the time.
So moved with those corrections in place.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarty, and do I have a second? Well, I'll, I'll second the motion. And so all in favor, let me see, since at the moment, the screen does move around a bit here. So at the moment, I don't have everyone on screen, so I'll just call for a voice vote, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarty.
Yes.
And Mr. Cale.
I'm Stane.
And Ms. Tate.
Yes.
And I am a yes. And do we have Mr. Doran present? He may have indicated you had to miss tonight and I just didn't recall. Alright, so we have four yeas, one abstention and two commissioners not present, so the motion passes. At this point, we move on to our public hearing. We have only one item on our agenda tonight, which is a marvelous thing because we get to not only focus on the one project, but the public doesn't have to wait through multiple projects before an opportunity to weigh in if there are any comments. Tonight's item is a use permit request and architectural control, below market rate housing agreement and environmental review, all of those aspects of approval for 111 Independence Drive applicant SP Menlo LLC. This is a request, excuse me, this is a rather long description. Request for a use permit, architectural control, BMR housing agreement, community amenities agreement, environmental review, parenthesis certification of the final environmental impact report, adoption of SEQA findings and adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program to read, close parentheses, to redevelop the site with approximately 105 multifamily dwelling units and approximately 746 square foot commercial space in one building with an above-ground multi-story parking garage integrated into the proposed eight-story building located in the RMUB, that's residential mixed-use bonus zoning district. The project site currently contains approximately 15,000 square foot single-story office building that would be demolished. The proposed building would contain approximately 96,055 square feet of total gross floor area. The project would have a floor area ratio or FAR of 237.5% for residential uses and 2% for commercial uses. The proposal includes a request for a use permit to modify certain RMU design standards and a request for an increase in height, density and FAR under the bonus level development allowance in exchange for community amenities. The proposed project would include a BMR housing agreement that requires a minimum of 15%, in this case, 14 units of the 92 maximum units allowed under the zoning code before accounting for the 13 bonus units, that 15% be affordable. The applicant is proposing to incorporate 13 additional dwelling units, which are included in the total of 105 per the density bonus provisions in our BMR housing, housing program. That's our code chapter 16.96.040, which allows density and FIR bonuses and exceptions to the city zoning ordinance requirements when BMR units are incorporated into the project. The final EIR for the proposed project does not identify any significant or unavoidable environmental impacts that would result from the implementation of a proposed project. The final EIR identifies potentially significant environmental impacts that can be mitigated to a less than significant level in the following categories. Air quality and noise, period. The final EIR identifies less than significant environmental impacts in the following categories. Population and housing, transportation and greenhouse gas emissions. The city previously prepared an initial study for the proposed project that determined the following topic areas would have no impacts, less than significant impacts or less than significant impacts with mitigation measures, including applicable mitigation measures from the Connect Menlo EIR, which guides projects in this zone. And those categories are aesthetics, agriculture and forestry resources, biological resources, cultural resources, energy, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, mineral resources, noise, meaning construction period, ground-borne vibration and aircraft-related noise, public services, recreation, utilities and service systems, tribal cultural resources and wildfire. The draft EIR was circulated for an extended 60-day public review from December 4, 2020 through February 2, 2021. And the planning commission held a public hearing on the draft EIR at its meeting on January 11, 2021. The final EIR includes responses to all substantive comments received on the draft EIR. The project location does not contain a toxic site pursuant to section 6596.2 of the government code. So, Ms. Bagat, do you have any additions to the staff report this evening?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, members of the public. I do have a brief overview of the project, a presentation that we've prepared that will run through that. But before I do that, I need to link into the record, minor modification to the resolution that was prepared for tonight. We would like to include a successor and a science clause, which reads, "This resolution, including the findings, entitlements, rights and obligations contained herein shall confer to the full benefit of and be binding upon any successor hires and assigns of the applicant. The applicant shall be at SP Menlo LLC and the signature shall be Nancy Mary Poore." This is a change to the resolution that was prepared this evening. So when we prepare the final resolution, we can add that language into the final resolution.
Thank you.
I one, I cannot see, oh, I'm just, I'm waiting for the presentation to come up. Please bear with me. So this evening, we're talking about the proposed project at 111 Independence Drive. The project site. I apologize, I think the presentation is taking a little bit too long. Here we go. The proposed site is located at 111 Independence Drive, which is east of Marsh Road near 101 and Marsh Road, Marsh Road interchange. The project is requesting environmental review, architectural control, use permit, below-market rate housing agreement and community amenities agreement to demolish the existing 15,000 square foot one-story office building on site. And we develop the site with 105 apartments here, approximately 746 square foot cafe space. The project is including below-market rate units or inclusionary housing units pursuant to the city's BMI housing program. In the amount of 15 percentage or 14 units, they are affordable to very low income, low income and moderate income households. Also, the project includes community amenity proposals, which includes the 746 square foot cafe and four additional one-bedroom units affordable to low-income households. The project includes a request for waivers pursuant to the city's BMI housing program. The waivers include an increase in height by one foot and reduction of the residential parking by one parking space. Additionally, the project also includes modifications to the design which include minimum setback and building projections and minor and major modulation, modulation changes. These design modifications and the waivers were reviewed by the planning commission at the January 11th study session. The planning commission at the time did not express any concern regarding the project modifications. The project, there was the environmental impact, draft environmental impact report that was circulated by the project. Staff has created a final environmental impact report as response to comments received on the draft environmental impact report as well as any minor changes to the draft environmental impact report. The final EIR was circulated on April 16th for a period of 10 days. Staff has not received any comments on the final EIR or the project in preparation of tonight's meeting. The project's BMR proposal was shared with the Housing Commission on February 3rd, where the Housing Commission had the opportunity to review and comment on the BMR proposal as well as the BMR term sheet. After reviewing the project proposal, the Housing Commission recommended that the planning commission approve the BMR proposal as well as the BMR term sheet. For tonight's meeting. One, can you move to next slide, please? Thank you. Tonight's meeting, staff is recommending. I'm sorry. For tonight's meeting, staff is recommending that the planning commission, following my presentation, allow the city's environmental consultants to give you an overview of the final EIR and the comments that were received during that process. Following which, the applicant will give a presentation on the project details. We recommend that you open up the meeting for public comments after that. Following which, commission can ask staff questions on the project details or the environmental impact report and conclude the meeting with commissioner deliberation on the project and final vote. As part of the final vote, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution certifying the final EIR, adopt the mitigation, monitoring and reporting program that was created based on the findings of the final EIR and approve the requested use permit, architectural control permit, below-market rate housing agreement and the community amenities operating covenant, a community amenities agreement, based on the conditions of approval that are provided to you as an attachment to the resolution. To conclude my presentation, I would like to invite, to staff from LSA who is the city's SEQA consultant to provide her presentation and I'm available to answer any questions that we might have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So shall we present the EIR first?
Hi, good evening. I'll just wait for my presentation to be loaded here. Here we go. I'm Teresa Wallace with LSA, the city's consultant for environmental review of the proposed 111 Independence Drive project. I'm going to go over the elements of the final EIR that is under consideration for certification tonight, beginning with a bit of background on the overall environmental review process. So this slide just shows the overall timeline for environmental review, which began when the city issued a notice of preparation or an NOP, notifying interested parties and responsible agencies that an EIR would be prepared. An initial study was also prepared and circulated with the NOP for review. All public comments received during the 30-day scoping period were considered during preparation of the draft EIR. The city and LSA and our technical specialists then prepared the draft EIR, which I will summarize in the upcoming slides. After the close of the 60-day public comment period on February 2nd, we prepared written responses to each substantive comment received on the adequacy of the EIR analysis in what's referred to as a response to comments document, which I'll go over in a minute. The response to comment document, as Cale said, was published and available for review on April 16th or 10 days before this hearing, as is required by the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. The environmental analysis for this project tiers from the Connect Menlo final EIR. The Connect Menlo EIR provided a program-level analysis of the development potential envisioned for the entire city, including the increased development potential in the Bayfront area where the project site is located. That EIR evaluated the impacts of approximately 2.3 million square feet of non-residential space, 400 hotel rooms and 4,500 residential units. The proposed project fits within the development assumptions of the Connect Menlo final EIR. A settlement agreement with the city of East Palo Alto requires certain projects that tier from Connect Menlo EIR, including those utilizing bonus level development, like the proposed project, to conduct a focused EIR with regard to housing and transportation. So environmental review of the project also complies with the terms of the settlement agreement. So as I mentioned before, an initial study was circulated with the notice that an EIR would be prepared. And based on the conclusions of the initial study, the topics shown on this slide were not further evaluated in the EIR because the project is not anticipated to result in significant effects related to these issue topics or because the initial study found that these topics were adequately addressed through the program-level EIR prepared by, in Connect Menlo. Based on the analysis in the initial study, the topics of population and housing, transportation, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions and noise were further evaluated in the focused EIR. And as has been mentioned before, the main takeaway from the slide is that there were no significant unavoidable impacts identified in the analysis and all impacts can be mitigated with implementation and mitigation measures. The EIR also evaluated a range of alternatives to the proposed project with the objective of avoiding or reducing potential impacts of the project. While a number of alternatives were considered, the EIR included a full analysis of three alternatives, including the SEQA required no project alternative and two development alternatives, as summarized on this slide. Ultimately, it was determined that in terms of environmental impacts, the base level alternative would be the superior alternative, but that it would not meet some of the objectives of the project to the same extent that the project would. This alternative would also not meet some of the objectives of Connect Menlo to the same degree as the proposed project. So that, that's the overview of the draft EIR findings and, and on to the response to comments document. So this slide just gives an overview of the components of the document and what is included. Two letters were received during the 60-day comment period, one from the Sequoia Union High School District, one from an individual. And the school district letter cited a number of concerns related to impacts to schools. A letter from the individual outlined overall concerns with development occurring in the city. The planning commission also provided comments during the draft EIR hearing and asked a number of clarifying questions. All of these comments were responded to in writing in the response to comments document. The response to comments document also includes any corrections or corrections. The response to comments document also includes any corrections or clarifications to the draft EIR that were made in response to the comments or that were initiated by staff or the consultants. Specifically, one of these relates to greenhouse gas emissions. The final EIR included additional analysis to review the proposed project's impacts related to GHG emissions using the statewide 2030 target, whereas the draft EIR scaled the analysis to the 2023 opening year for the project. The new analysis actually establishes the lower threshold for GHG emissions, and the analysis concluded that even with its lower threshold, GHG emissions generated by the project would be less than significant, which is the same conclusion made in the draft EIR for the 2023 opening year. And this analysis was added to be consistent with the thresholds that are being applied to other projects that are undergoing environmental review in the city. It was just to be consistent with those other EIRs. So with completion of the response to comments document, LSA and city staff determined that none of the comments on the draft EIR disclose any new significant information. No significant or substantially more severe significant impacts have been identified, and no new feasible mitigation measures or alternatives have been identified, which are considerably different from others previously analyzed, and that the draft EIR did not require recirculation. So as I mentioned before, we're now considering the final EIR, which includes the draft EIR and the response to comments document, as well as the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or the MMRP. The MMRP identifies all applicable mitigation measures from the initial study and the draft EIR, including applicable measures from the Connect Menlo final EIR, and any project specific mitigation measures. The project sponsor will be required to comply with these measures when implementing the project, and the MMRP identifies the timing and oversight responsibilities for each measure. So finally, one point that I want to make is about the adequacy of the final EIR. The planning commission is being asked to decide whether or not the final EIR is adequate, and the standard for adequacy of an EIR is shown on this slide. So the basic purpose of SEQA, which is a state law, is to inform the public and decision makers of the environmental effects of a project, identify ways in which adverse environmental effects can be avoided or reduced, and avoid impacts to the environment where feasible, and to disclose to the public the reasons why the lead agency may approve a project which has adverse environmental effects. The adequacy of an EIR is determined in terms of what is reasonably feasible in light of factors such as the magnitude of the project, the severity of its likely impacts, and the geographic scope of the project. So the planning commission is being asked to determine if the basic purposes of SEQA have been fulfilled, and if based on their own independent judgment, the EIR is adequate. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions later on, and also I wanted to note that we have Kittleson here, the transportation consultant, to also answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wallace. Do we have any questions at this point from our panel? All right, seeing none, shall we move on with the project presentation? And Ms. Begat will present for the project tonight. Mr. Kadivar, is that you?
Yes, sir, Chair Riggs, it is.
Good evening.
Good evening to you and all the planning commissioners. This is quite an exciting moment for us. We hope that you all share in the enthusiasm. This is officially the fourth time we have been before the commission for this project, as mentioned earlier. The first three being study sessions, and tonight coming to you as highlighted a couple of times now for certification of the final EIR, and for approval as a decision-making body for architectural control, use permit, below market rate housing agreement, and community amenities agreement. I wanted to start first by thanking city's professional staff, as well as introducing our team. Tonight is really the culmination of a four-year-long journey, and none of this would have been possible without the concerted efforts of the city of Menlo Park's professional staff in planning and community development. In particular, I wanted to thank Deanna Chow, Kyle Perata, Katie Meador, and Pyle Begat, as well as Rhonda Kaufman in Housing, the housing commissioners, and certainly all of you. There's been a lot of input gathered throughout these many, many study sessions from you, from members of the public, and that's really informed this process, this journey. With me tonight is a team from BDE, the Architects of Record, led by President John Ennis, and with him is Nathan Simpson, who has been the lead designer throughout this entire process, as well as, I believe, we have Ian Murphy, a principal, and Yun Chang as well. If anything comes up, they can lend their expertise as well. And certainly, last but not least, our landscape architect, Paul Letery, president of Gazardo. I am the representative for the ownership family. We are a local family, Menlo Park native. I went to Oak Knoll, Hillview, and MA, and the oldest of my four kids is now a freshman at MA, so we've come quite full circle here. And because of this history, we took a lot of pride in the overall design aesthetic of the building. And the site location, being at the corner of Marsh and 101, in our opinion, makes it a prominent location, in some ways, kind of an entrance to the city for a lot of people coming from 101. And then adding to it is the uniqueness of the shape of the parcel with the significant curve across the majority of the street facing facade. So because of this, we spent a lot of time to try and bring an interesting and thoughtful design. You know, the natural inclination in multifamily is to go rectilinear, and we really worked hard to do something different here. Given the pronounced curve of the gateway building, we designed an inverse curve to create the yin and yang effect that you see here on this screen. And we think it's worked really well. We've gotten positive feedback from staff and from you all really consistently throughout. When we, from our first submittal, and really our first study session in June of 2018, the fundamental design and aesthetics have really not changed. The heavy lifting, the major changes have been, you know, other than a myriad of, you know, fine tuning measures, and there were a ton. It's really been around traffic, parking, environmental, BMR, community amenities. So that's, you know, that's what's been going on the last few years here. Some of the details, this is probably a little redundant, so I'll go through it quickly. First and foremost, this project is 100% designed to improve the jobs, housing imbalance, right? We are removing 15,000 square feet of office stock and not adding any new office despite zoning along that and the RMBU. 105 units, 90% of them, one bedroom and studio, which really addresses any concerns about impacts on schools. In terms of environmental, bare minimum auto parking, one-to-one ratio on the car side, 1.5 to one on the bike side. And having this head and city adopt the REACH codes as we went through this process, we are an all-electric building, but we didn't really modify the amenities from a pool, hot tub, barbecue, fireplace, those things are all in place with a fully electric building. And in terms of EV, 20% of the units will be EBSD out of the gates, above the 15% required, and all spaces will be wired for EV. The BMR, and the only thing I'll highlight here, is kind of the big takeaway and a large topic of conversation, a lot of input provided over the years, was that we're providing multiple income levels. So we are proud to be able to bring, you know, this project that includes moderate as well as very low BMR, BMR housing. And lastly, the community amenities agreement, this is really the only thing that substantially changed since we spoke last in January, as mentioned earlier, four BMR units, as well as the cafe, all coming to a total of a surplus in the amount of over $234,000. So with that, I will hand it over to Nathan, who will provide a brief summary from the architects perspective.
You're on mute, Nathan. Thank you, Steve. Hi, everyone. I'm Nathan with BD Architecture. Nice to everyone again, since we were just here a few months ago. Diving back into this, everyone's aware we are the Menlo Park Planning Code Ordinance 1026, which puts us in the RNU district, and then we have a bonus overlay. That's been our guiding document. You can also kind of see our little spot right here up against Marsh Road and Highway 101. Zooming into the project, looking at the first floor, Independence Drive wraps the left of the page along Marsh Road, and then the bottom of the page is closer to 101 and also still independent. Starting up at the top of the page again, the EVA lane is going to be talked about later, but adjacent to that is bike rooms, and then we also have dog wash, building access. Mentioned a few different times now have been the cafe, which is one of our amenities. Also along the front end of the building is fitness, a lounge, leasing operations, lobby. And then at the bottom of the page is garage access, which is the single garage access for all three levels of parking. Floors two and three are very similar to this floor. The garage layout's exactly the same. All the amenity spaces are double height. And then at the third floor, there's some units that wrap along the front of the building to hide the garage from the public right away. Going up to the fourth floor, you can see the building's typical shape starting to take shape, and then you can see the podium starting to set back, where you can see we have some private residential decks, and on the back of the building are common amenities such as pool spa, and Paul Letery will talk about those in a moment. Going up to the building, you can see again the typical floor plate with all the units, and then at the corner of the building overlooking the San Francisco Bay, we have a club room with an adjacent roof deck looking out to that. And then the renderings that we have are one of the views looking at the building from 101 and basically the intersection of Marsh Road. And the building's architecture is very clean, very massive in regards to the adjacent office building, but we also go through the effort of making sure there's fine articulations such as the white verticals to help break down the massing. We also have a significant setback from the required. And then all the units have decks or operable bays that will help them enjoy the views and get natural air and ventilation. Looking at the material palettes in a little bit more detail, we are keeping a very clean, timeless set of palettes, which is basically sets of grays and an ombre, including some accents. All the metalwork on the building will be architectural bronze, which will match the windows and the storefronts. And of the metalwork, you'll see it's all going to be steel mesh, which is a security grill that also works for our railings and our awning. Any glass that we do have on the project for railings, we're going to be doing a frosted glass, so it is bird safe. And then our primary accent material on the project is a phenolic wood paneling, which you previously saw in the renderings, which is all the brown depicted. And then the project has smooth plaster, and then at the base of the building in some accent locations, they'll be poured concrete. And then mentioned previously is some minor and major building articulation that we are meeting the intent of, and just modifying it in a way which basically allows us to achieve the yin and yang effect, which the team's mentioned earlier, with the concave building. And then with that, I'm going to hand it over to Paul Letery to talk about landscape.
Great. Thank you, Nathan. Paul Letery is the principal of the Gazardo partnership, as we've talked to most of you before, I think. I think a lot of what I'm going to show you, I'm going to try to go through relatively quickly, because I think you've seen most of this. There haven't been any significant changes, a few little things that we have done, so we'll go through that. As Nathan said, you know, we'll start from the top, did the same thing he did. You know, the EVA, we've got, you know, we've added some nicer paving materials to it. We're kind of making some multi-use out of it, having that basketball court at the end. That's sort of beyond the spot that is required for fire access. So we have that as a sort of multi-use kind of thing, the little dog park in the upper right corner, bocce court down the right side, and then we go around to the front. We'll talk about the right-hand side of the site in a little bit. Out front, we have, you know, we have the metal panels that are screening the transformer elements that are at the upper left there, thank you. Bike parking, our cafes is elevated about 30 inches above the street, so you have stairs and there's a ramp system that that kind of invisibly, I think, helps to get you up there. We kind of integrated it into the geometry of the building, so you can enter at the bottom there and go left up to the cafe, or go right over to the lobby with a ramp, and you have direct stair access. We have our seat bench elements and planter elements out there and a potential for a little art spot there. One change, it wasn't made since the last meeting, but it was made since the beginning, was to actually get the street trees in the planter strip between the sidewalk and the curb. We had some issues with gas lines in there, but we managed to get a little bit more information about it and be a little bit more clever about how we did it. The reason there's no tree right in the very center is because there's just no way to get one there because of the gas line. But we think it actually opens the plaza space right there to the street, so it may be a positive anyway. So let's go on there, Nathan. So this is just sort of a lower end view of how the plaza looks relative to the street without much detail in it. It's just sort of a, it's almost a massing diagram. And then the upper levels have remained mostly the same. There's stormwater treatment planters on that front concave area, where those are private patios for the units. We're also using it for stormwater treatment and for other planting. And the podium level pool is a raised pool and spa. We have ramps and stairs to get you there, and we've utilized that grade difference to integrate the electric version of fireplaces, those are red lines. And we have a trellis element, and we have a lot of actually rich elements there to help make that a really vibrant kind of space that I think people will really want to use. There's an amenity space, amenity room, club room there at the bottom right, where we have an open plaza space in front of it, which will have furniture in it, and a direct access to the pool, sort of, you know, planned north from there. And we think it actually, and we also have bathrooms, a bathroom building up there as well. It's integrated into the stair tower, so it kind of feels like it's part of the part of the design, and then the private patio is along the edge. So we're pretty excited about how that space is going to work. Roof deck, roof deck's basically very simple. It's really all about the view and about the uses that can happen up there. There's a mild amount of planting, we have some decking material and then paver material as well to get our occupancy just right, and also to create, you know, I think really some variety of spaces that will really work pretty well up there, the roof onward. Materials, this has been the same, I think, since we've started. Just the general look, we won't have those raging flames that you see in the middle, because that's not how electric fireplaces work, but the general character is pretty consistent here. This next slide is sort of a composite plan, showing all the levels stacked on top of each other, as you might see it from an airplane. And our neighbor connectivity, we had talked a little bit about the adjacent site, which has an EVA as part of its plan, and what we've done is we've sort of donated five feet of paving on our side to sort of expand that EVA. We've been using the same paving materials and the same paving pattern, so when it's all built, it should be pretty seamless. And then the elevations have been coordinated so that it's all level up to right about where the arrow is, where we have some planting area that helps to separate things, because their EVA on the right side continues to go up a bit, and our ground plane doesn't, where we get to the bocce court, which is sort of, is a private space for just our site. There's a fence there. There's a fence there and a, and a gate to, to allow you to come in. And I think the next picture has a sort of flips everything 90 degrees. But you can also see sort of the elevation as it would appear from the EVA side on top. And, and then if you, I think the bottom portion, I pretty much talked about the red line is showing where the property line is. That you won't be able to perceive that on, up until you get to about the Y and the, and neighbor property. Then, then there's a fence line because we have a grade change. We also have the potential of a connection up at the, just below the basketball court. That there's, it's possible for that to, that's also to be connected to that, to that public open space. The exact details for that are getting sorted out with the neighbors. Cause they would have to do that chunk of paving since it's on their site. We have, we've allowed for it to happen in a sort of public way. So that's a, that's pretty much how that works. And I think that there's a thank you, there's the thank you slide. So, and thank you for listening to our presentation. And we're here to answer questions and talk about any items you'd like to discuss.
Thank you, Paul. And that concludes the architectural team's presentation, I take it?
Yes, sir.
All right. So at this point, we can move directly into public comment and then come back for questions. And let me just check in with staff. Do we want to, given that the EIR has already been discussed, do we want to open the public comment to either EIR or, or the plan approvals at this point? Does that make sense? And Ms. Begat, are you, are you, oh, I'm sorry, maybe Mr. Prada, you'll clue me on that?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that question and then Pyle can follow up if needed. So this would be one, one public hearing. And so the, the EIR, the final EIR, the response to comments document and the edits to the draft year, which constitute the final EIR. And the entitlements can all be considered in one public hearing, one public comment. So the, if you open it up to the public now, it's for the entitlements as well as the final EIR.
All right. With that, let me invite any member of the public who would like to comment on the project. This would be the time. So look at your zoom control panel and look for that hand icon. You can click on that icon to let staff know that you would like to speak for three minutes on the, up to three minutes, no obligation. On this subject, if you are attending by phone, I believe it's star nine. Is, is that correct, Mr. Tapia?
Yes, that's correct. Star nine, if you're listening via telephone.
All right. So please indicate if you would like to speak at this time. I realize many members of the public feel they have seen this project before. The refinements are, I think, meaningful. From relatively small issues like color to the larger issues for in community terms like the BMR count. And do we have any hands or phone signals?
At this time, Chair Riggs, I'm not seeing any virtual hands, but we can give it a minute or so if you would like.
Well, probably not a full minute. All right. Well, let's close public comment at this point. And bring it back to the members of the commission for, let's just put it open to questions or comments at this point. We have seen the project and five of us in attendance, I think, have had opportunities to comment before. And so does anyone have a comment or question at this point, Mr. DeCarty?
I have a few just clarifying questions in this mix. First of all, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the commitment to the community. Thank you for this project just up front. It's a, it's exciting to be able to talk this through this evening. I just have a short list of clarifying questions for various folks. To the staff, I believe, in the staff report, when it talks about level of service at, at the intersections and then talks about the mitigation, is to bring the level of service back to its current level, which you then say is substandard from optimal. And so my question to staff is, why not, if we are looking at level of service at key intersections, actually mitigate to bring toward the optimal level by your assessment? And why wasn't that done? And what was the cost differential?
Mr. Prada, do you want to take that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to. So thanks for the question, Commissioner DeCarty. We also do have Renee and our transportation team available as well to answer questions that are related to either BMT or level of service and, and for EIR related questions, we do have representatives from Kittleson, our transportation consultant. With that, I can answer this question, I think. So the, first off, level of service is not a sequoia impact anymore. And so I wanted to start by identifying that what the recommended conditions of approval identify are recommended improvement measures to bring the intersections back to the pre-project conditions, which are what our TIA, our Transportation Impact Analysis Guidelines, require staff to evaluate per project. So basically our TIA guidelines require us to look at bringing a intersection that, that has a, you know, a deficiency in service or into the level of service that's created by a project, bring it back to pre-project conditions. This is similar to what you would see in an EIR mitigation. I do want to make sure there's a distinction, but under pre-BMT vehicle miles traveled, level of service mitigation at that point would have brought it back to also pre-project versus kind of the optimal level of service conditions, which I think our general plan identifies that we should strive for level of service D at all city-controlled intersections. The reason why the conditions of approval are recommended as bringing it back to pre-project conditions is because that really is the, the project's share or the project's increase in delay at the intersection versus what would be much more substantial if you looked to bring a, an intersection to better than pre-project conditions. Does that help answer the question?
Yeah, it does. And so, so I appreciate that, that the, the difference in cost would be substantial. But because you were meeting the TIA guidelines, you didn't need to take a look at actually bringing it to that improved level. Is that right?
So I think there's a couple of things there. So our, yes, our TIA guidelines are what we're evaluating the project against. We are also evaluating the project for compliance with all of our general plan, goals, policies, programs. And I do think that there's a distinction between what a project may be reasonably expected to improve with regard to intersections versus improvements that go above and beyond bringing in an intersection that's that E or F to D. I believe this was a topic that was in a previous study session, but, but we, we did not receive any discussion on that at that time.
Great, thank you. And then to the, to the applicant, can you just describe just briefly the TDM plan that you are going to be implementing?
Sure. I think Teresa, sometimes they, they take this question as well, in case they want to chime in. But the measures include certainly the, I mean fundamentally, the, the parking ratio, the number of parking spots is a big component, is a major component of that. And then the unbundling of the parking spaces from the, from the lease is likewise a large, a large component of it. The proportion of bike parking is another one of the, the, the measures. And then we've got in there a kind of a kiosk concept where there's a lot of promotion of public transportation options specific to that location. So those are kind of the, you know, we took the, we, we focused on the big rocks of that heavy auto, or sorry, heavy bike parking, low, low auto and the promotion of alternative transportation.
And, and just remind, how, how do you track and then certify that, that it's actually meeting its goals over time?
Oh, there's a, there's a full process that the city has laid out that we have to provide the information. I believe it's on an annual basis. I don't know if LSA has it with them, but yeah, there's a, there's an annual report format that we've got to provide.
Did you ever look at trying to meet the project at something greater than the demanded reduction? Did you know how much additional problem that would create for you in this project?
Well, I mean, we, what we looked at is going to one-to-one with the biggest thing we could. So we spent a lot of time and effort trying to figure out a way to make that work.
Awesome. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's fine for, that's fine for this. Then I got a, just a, another set of questions. I think it's probably for the, for Mr. LeTieri on the, on the landscaping. On the, on the back corner by the bocce court, can you describe the difference in height that will happen then? The, the property next door is going to be higher. So there's some kind of wall or something. How high is that going to be? And how much space do people have to walk between the bocce court and that wall?
Okay, fair enough question. I'll look, I'm looking at my other screen that has all of the vital information on it. It's a, it's a five foot wide walkway next to the bocce court. And I think the grade change maxes out at about two feet at the, at the upper corner. Gradual. It's not, it's not an enormous grade change.
Okay. And then can you say a little bit more about how does it connect to the, I understood that there's potential to connect by that basketball court. That's a part that by the basketball court is a part that is gated in.
Right.
So there'd be a residential access. On this part by the bocce court, what's, what's the plan for connectivity with the property immediately adjacent behind?
And you're looking at the, at plan north or you're talking about the south side of the bocce court?
So now I'm talking, if I am walking as a resident that does not have any business or I don't live in the building, I'm not going to the building. I'm just trying to get by it.
Okay.
How do I get by it?
You, you walk on the EVA that's part of the, you, you walk, we have our five foot chunk, but when you get to the bocce, bocce court, there is a gate and a fence there that you would not have access to. You would continue on the EVA and go around the site and back up through, through the Menlo portal site, which has, which has a public walkway that runs all the way through.
So, so essentially your property is, is essentially gated off completely. And that from a member of the public, it's going to be the other two properties.
No, no, not completely. It's.
No, I understand. I think at the bocce court that happens. Until then, it's a wider piece.
That's correct.
Thank you for, awesome. Just perfect. Just what I, I needed. I appreciate that. So. And then my last question is, I, I should have had this in the materials and I, I did, just didn't see it and you could help me out. What, what level of BMR would be the four proposed units as part of the community amenities?
Low.
At low? Okay. Terrific. Thank you very much. Those are, those are my questions. So I appreciate clarifying for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarty. And I think I'll have a follow-up later regarding the traffic. So do we have other comments from the panel? All right. Well, perhaps I'll stimulate some, I'll just make a couple. One aesthetically, I, I can only say that I think it's a very handsome building and that I, I feel that the design, as I've stated before, responds to the spirit of massing and modulation. And I would support the design as it is without additional interruptions to the facade. And I have to say, I quite like the interplay of materials and colors. And I think when we, when we talk about the BMR requirements, I prefer to leave that to the advice of the Housing Commission because that's really what we have. But I am gratified to see, one, that we've increased the number of BMRs. And two, that at least some of them are, quite a number of them are below the moderate income. They're and, and just to cover the note, since we are to make an assessment tonight, it's my feeling that the EIR is adequate. So then regarding the amenities, which I think are perhaps the hardest, the hardest issue to resolve. It appears that obviously the applicant has to have a set of rules to go by. And the rules for the bonus level include responding to the list of amenities as presented under Connect Menlo. And that list of amenities has not changed. And until and unless counsel wants to change it, it is fixed. And then frankly, at this stage on this project, it would be a little difficult to change the rules without agreement from the, from the applicant. However, I do see some room potentially for that. So I'll, I'll leave that to others to press that forward. So then I have a couple of questions. And I guess I would direct them to Mr. LeTieri. One is largely out of curiosity, the other has to do with function. So the, the curiosity question has to do with planting trees in the parkway between the curb and the walkway. Are all such trees planted with root guards?
Yes. Yeah. We also have silver cells that are going under the sidewalk to increase the rooting, the rooting area for these trees. That, you know, minimize the usual problems we have with street trees. You know, root issues and all that, that you'll, you still have them, but, but they greatly reduces them by doing that. And there will be root barriers. Yes.
And what did you call them? Silver cells?
Silver, S-I-L-V-A. There, it's sort of, it's this, it's a, these plastic elements that go down into the ground and have airspace in them. And it gets filled with, with a special soil mix. And it allows, it allows for the tree roots to, to grow under the sidewalk without finding that sweet spot, which is right below the concrete typically in the sidewalk. Gets where the roots want to be, because that's where the moisture is, allows the moisture to go down and allows the roots to go down and have air there as well.
Ah, wonderful.
Yeah.
I have, I've wondered just how deep a root guard one would have to have before you could keep it out of the paving and the sidewalk. So that's a great answer. And then the electric fireplaces. I have to admit, I've never had a great image of them, but those wiser and in a position greater than mine have decided. So they will give an image, I guess, of, of light. I know they're capable of producing heat, but in the case of outdoor fireplaces, are, are these, are these electric fireplaces going to produce any heat to speak of?
Well, I, I have the. Well, I, I have the unfortunate uh aspect that I don't have experience with them yet. Because, you know, no one's had to do them until now. And uh, but, but we have them on a number of projects in, in various stages. And, and yes, they do produce heat because they're really, uh, there's an electric heater basically that has a fan that is blowing warm air out. Not at high velocity, but you actually do get the sense of, of, there is warps coming out of it. Uh, but you don't have the, the hot piece of glass or the hot metal that's, that can, that can be the downside of a, you know, a real fireplace. Uh, so yeah, I'm kind of, we're kind of excited about the idea. One thing you have to provide is a cover of, of, over it. So that's part of the reason we have the trellis, where we have a, a portion of our trellis is solid right next to the fireplace. And then it's open after that. I think it's four feet of width to keep, you know, rainwater off of it. Apparently, they don't really like to be rained upon. They're, they're outdoor, outdoor rated, but they're not, they're not supposed to be rained on. So that's how, that's how it's set up right now. And I think we still have, uh, and we said, we have it mounted in the wall.
Oh, okay. Because I did see the tube mounted in the wall, but I thought in a rendering, I saw an open pit.
Uh, no, you saw a, a, an image. There's an image of a gas fireplace that I pointed out that had the flame that we won't have. Yeah, you can't do the, the, the see-through fireplace with an electrical one that you could do the normal one. So that's one of the number of downsides of it. But I think, uh, I think it'll still be a pretty interesting feature. And I think it will be functional. Although, you know, not real flame.
Well, but do they put out something like forty thousand BTUs or are they considerably below that?
I don't thi- I, I don't know the BTU uh count, but I don't think they, it's not a house, it's not a house heating system we have sitting out there. It's not that level of heat. Uh, and, and actually, you know, a, a, a normal outdoor fireplace, the, the heat doesn't project that far from the fireplace typically anyway. So we think that it, we think functionally it may be as good or maybe better. So we'll see.
Well, we'll see. Uh, I know in outdoor uh venues, people are inclined to crowd around the um, the fireplace for good reason. And then it'd be interesting to see whether it serves them any purpose.
I think, I think it will. I think it will, it will blow warm air.
All right. Thank you. And then um. I had a follow-up question uh from a point Mr. DeCarty raised. It was an interesting concept um. To try to improve uh the level of service. Of the roadways in and around Marsh Road and the expressway. I think a lot of people have had that hope. I think that hope has been spoken to. I think we heard a fair amount of it during the, I don't know, twelve or eighteen or whatever it was. Transportation Management Plan Committee meetings that we had. I think to the point where the public simply got tired of asking for the same thing. Because we have a problem there. It does seem that. Our expectations as a city are that our transportation problems will be solved piecemeal by each. Element of uh redevelopment. And I certainly see limits to that. And uh, I personally think that the city of Menlo Park needs to step up. With funding. Whether that's acquired funding from the county, the state, or a combination with the federal government. In order to make these improvements, it's very difficult to ask for funding if you have not. Determined what the options are and what the outcomes could possibly be. I will note that some, oh, I don't know, maybe. Sixteen, eighteen years ago, Sand Hill Road was a constant traffic jam for at least a couple of hours every afternoon. And when the hotel and office buildings were proposed out at two eighty. The residents of the west end of town. Came forward with a rather strong objection, saying we already have virtual traffic gridlock two hours a day. Why on earth would we approve this new population of uses? And the traffic engineer said, well, actually, we can modify the intersections. Most significantly, the signals such that you can have better service. After the hotel and office buildings are occupied than you do now. I think what was most educational about that was that we were cruising along with um highly inefficient. Signal systems and intersection details, you know, like left turn pockets. I don't know to what degree we have those options for improving traffic flow. We have at least one council member, I realize, that feels that uh any traffic flow improvement. Only encourages the bad behavior of the thirty-five thousand residents. But personally, I would like to see improved traffic flow. I think a lot of us would. And it may be that we as commission members need to question council. Why is there not a city project to improve the flow on those roadways? The answer is already halfway there because we have a transportation management plan. Uh, which outlines the potential approvals. And so I think potentially if. We as members of the community pressed for those improvements, rather than waiting for a series of. Projects nearby. And hoping that they would cover the improvements. I think we, we might actually um be able to move something forward. I regret that the amenities list does not include a mention of traffic flow. I don't know whether that was an oversight, but of the six items. Under transit and transportation improvements, they include essentially. And I'm abbreviating sidewalks, traffic calming, bike trails. The Dunbarton Rail, which of course would be a large effort and a large solution. Innovative transportation solutions such as personal rapid transit and bus service and amenities. So at no point did we actually address the elephant in the room, which is ten thousand cars that occasionally are not moving. All right. I've taken that opportunity to speak and in the meantime, uh, uh, like. That's, that's my prompt for anyone else on the commission who would like to speak to the project. Mr. Barnes.
Good evening. Good evening to the applicant and applicant team. Thank you for. Being with us here tonight and allowing us the opportunity to review your project. As you noted, we've seen it a number of times before. I wanted to go through, we have some. Items that we are. Looking at this evening and they're. They're largely bundled together, but I wanted to pull them out piece by piece and express. My opinions on them. I'm looking at the different things we're doing this evening and staff recommendations for. For the commission and my thoughts on that. So we've got the certification of the EIR, which. I am fine with making findings as required by CECL, fine with that as well. Approving the MMRP, that's a yes. Approving the architectural control. That's a yes. Use permit, yes. BMR housing agreement. Yes, but qualified. And. Although I ran through the sequentially, it's only because we've seen this project over a number of years and through multiple meetings. That we've had the opportunity to really dig in on this project. And from my perspective, I don't see anything materially. Changed or new or revised about the project, which would cause me to go back and revisit. Those to the degree that I'll disagree. In addition to, you know, looking at the EIR and whether it was done. In a way that met the, the standards. The standards were for adequacy, completeness and good faith and it meant that. The final one, so that's all out of the way for me. Uh, the final one is the community amenities agreement and. Uh, I'll ask for the chair's professional courtesy as we go through. And uh, vote on this um to, to break these out in pieces because it's the last one. The community amenities agreement that I, I just struggle with and I can't get behind. And I have been looking through the, the way that the community amenities are framed. Be it in the resolution originally back from, you know, starting with Connect Menlo. And then this resolution we have in front of us for this evening. But as I look at the community many as proposed, the cafe, you know, the spirit of the amenities. Uh, for this area is, you know, community many's list is, and I'm reading from the, the whereas in the resolution. Sixty-three third, sixty-three sixty, it says, whereas the community amenities list reflects the community's priority of benefits. And then I take that and I look at the list of amenities that are allowable in this retail. Component and it's got an ATM that's. Pull this out here. It's got these four areas in, in retail, which this particular amenity is intended to fall in. Side of, and it's got grocery store, restaurants, pharmacy, bank, ATM. So the, the proposal cafe falls in B restaurants and it says. A range of dining options from cafes to sit-down restaurants, serving residents and local employees. And as I break that down. You know, unless you were a roadside gas station, you would naturally serve a resident in a, a local employee. So I go back to the intent of this, which was to provide a community benefit. As thought of by the residents in the area. And I simply don't believe that this cafe is a representation of a community benefit. For the area. And I, and I say that, and I've always have been predispositioned against cafes. I mean, I, when we were at ten twenty Alma, that was actually, it preceded me. Ten twenty, ten twenty Alma was the building that was built across from the train station. Uh, and I came on to the planning commission afterwards, after that public benefit was approved for the coffee kiosk there. And I remember taking umbrage at that, as much as I take umbrage at this, in that, you know, I'd rather. The, the money associated with it, I think can go to better. Uh, better ends. And in that situation, the money for the kiosk that basically serves. The, the one outside the train station, which serves, you know, very fancy lattes and people waiting for trains and no way benefits the average community. In the sense of a community amenity. Broadly enough, I certainly don't think that this broadly enough, given, given, you know, given the nature of the amenity, a cafe. And given the, the location of this particular building, where it is, what the access is. Where this cafe uh points to, pointing out towards Marsh. Uh, it's not a normal traffic location, foot traffic location that I think residents are coming in and out of. So for that reason, uh, I don't think it meets the muster of a community amenity as envisioned by the amenities list. And I was on, and I spent a great deal of time on the Connect Menlo process. I was at community meetings. I was part of this creating this list. And I don't believe it falls in that spirit. And I look at the money associated with it. And the one better units being proposed as part of a community amenities are roughly five hundred and sixty-one thousand. The value put on this cafe at five hundred and thirty-eight, it is effectively, uh, you know, numerically very close. So for that reason, I believe the better unit should be opt, uh, another one. And uh, this cafe should not be considered a community amenity as it relates to, you know. The way the community men, the spirit of the community man agreement. So. All the other pieces, I appreciate this project. I appreciate the architecture. I appreciate the time that has gone into getting us here. Uh, you know, appreciate the housing units. But that last piece is something that I diverge with the. Of all, of the things we need to approve tonight, that's um. And I believe it is approved. It's not a recommendation, this approval. Uh, yeah, make the necessary findings and approve the project. Uh, so of that, I will, I won't vote for that last piece. But the other pieces I am um. Either in agreement with or appreciative of, but on that one I won't. So thank you. Are you the four?
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Miss Tate.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Barnes, for that. Um, I, I completely agree. And um, and I spent a lot of time with Connect Mello also. And I, I don't see that as a, the cafe as an amenity that uh the community. Uh, who was in mind when the list was drawn, um, where it would be impactful. Um, and I believe we had this conversation before about um. About cafes, uh, several times actually, um, on this commission. I do appreciate the additional units, uh, and throwing another one in there instead of the cafe. Or two, uh, would definitely be appreciated and, and if there was some sort of way to make sure that. For surely those additional units that are being considered amenities, uh, do go to Bellhaven residents. Or someone connected to Bellhaven, I should say. That's it. I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Other comments? Uh, Mr. DeCarty.
Yeah, I really, I, I appreciate Commissioner Barnes. I'll do the same thing. I'm actually uh echoing quite a bit. I'm on, the IR, I'm fine. Uh, the MMRP, I'm fine. The use permit, the architectural control, I agree with Chair Riggs's comments. I think it looks nice. It's a good building. I like the yin and yang. I like the thoughtfulness that you all have put into that. I uh, you know, my questions about the landscaping, um, I really um. Want the spirit of the connectivity that we're supposed to have for people that can ride bikes and walk um to various places in this um, this part of our town. Um, and I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned. I hope that when these are all built and it's all stacked up, that it actually feels inviting and safe. For people to walk through um at all hours of the day or whenever they want to be able to get through. But I appreciate the answer to the questions around this project. Uh, below market rate housing and the, the variability of cross rates, um, I really appreciate. I think that's great. Um, I would echo Chair Riggs's um comments on the transportation, although he and I differed on the solution set. I'm not so much concerned about the traffic flow and improving it. I'm concerned about reducing the traffic overall. Which I do think the TDM plans have in that mix and preferencing the people who are residents, the long-term residents. Uh, before this additional construction in the community so that their traffic can get through uh better and by the, the means that work for them. And I think that's where we continue, as you point out, when we say that the way we are going to improve our traffic circulation is through these. One-off approvals of projects, that's simply not going to get it done and is frustrating for me. And I return to that comment again and again in these hearings. So that puts us on the community amenity piece. Uh, and I find myself, I mean, if we're projecting forward here and there are five of us. I find myself agreeing with Commissioner Barnes and Commissioner Tate. And so I would love to, through the chair, actually hear a little bit more from the applicant. Uh, neither Commissioner Barnes nor Commissioner Tate posed their comments as questions, but I would like to pose them as questions to the applicant. Um, and to hear their thoughts um about the issues and concerns raised by our two previous commissioners, who I thought stated them nicely.
Yes, I would like that also. So um, Mr. Cadavar, perhaps you can speak to it.
We can't hear you.
Sorry, gotta hit the phone. So I'd like to take this, thank you. I would like to take us back to how this all originated. It was at the behest of staff initially. And there was, there has been support for the cafe in terms of the community as well as the planning commissioner. So we didn't, you know, it, it wasn't really necessarily at the outset that we, that we brought to the table. Pamela Jones in particular, who I'm sure you all know is quite active. She was quite supportive of the idea of the cafe at this location. And you might remember Commissioner Kennedy, I don't think it was the number three, uh, state session number two, was likewise quite supportive of it. So we have worked really, really hard to listen and to follow the guidelines and to check in and we, and something that's gotten lost here is, I think the word surplus got lost here. So you, you're adding, you're, you know, you're giving it a value, but we're going above the value of the, of the overall amenity, uh, amenity component. So I feel like there's a lack of looking at the totality of what we're doing here. There's not, I don't know any other projects that are doing all income levels, right? It doesn't pencil as well. We, we've really gone in every category as much as you could conceivably ask anybody to do. And we were led down this road by staff. And, and, and the, this whole community many proposal agreement, I worked with, who I'm supposed to work with to come to terms with. And for at this eleventh hour to read the community amenity and not take it to the plain meaning of the word, a range of dining options from cafes to sit down restaurants, serving residents and local employees. It's a more than confounding. I mean, it's and, and you can't just approve, you can't sort of just approve three out of four, right? That's not really not going to get us anywhere. There's no project. So I, I mean, I, it might behoove us to have the city attorney chime in on whether sort of the plain meaning of the community amenities should be read that way or should it not? And so what is, what are we as people that are trying to bring housing to rely on? We can't listen to staff. We can't, we can't come to terms. We can't come to an agreement by the designated person that we're supposed to come to an agreement with. And then eleventh hour, I know it says that, but it doesn't mean that. That's my feeling.
I have a, a question and then a comment. First of all, thank you and I appreciate it. And hear the, hear the intensity and understand the intensity and the eleventh hour points. So, so thank you for your response, at least from, from my perspective on the question. I guess this is just a clarification. I mean, it's to the point about, it sounds like in the history that the beginning of this became a conversation with staff about what community amenities and what it might look like and that sort of piece and the cafe became a, a place in the beginning. And I completely agree that we've seen this with a cafe in it before tonight. So unless, so I, I will take that as how that exchange happened in this mix historically, unless there's anybody on staff that wants to characterize that differently. And then a comment I would point here is that one of the things that I would be hopeful for is that you will have residents that will not have a car. And that they will walk or bike or use other transportation to get to their employment, or perhaps their employment is nearby. And you're going to have a portion of your residents in your building who mix all different income levels. And so the benefit of being able to have easy access to a place to get a meal nearby while is not, I agree with the comments that because of your location and it's not your issue that your location is where it is in, in, in our community, that it's not easy to access for folks who live in, you know, single family units or duplexes in other part of the community. It is still a benefit for the people who are living in your building or nearby to be able to have easy access to food, which shouldn't be discounted in this mix. So, so thank you for the clarification and I, I appreciate that and appreciate the points raised by Commissioner Barnes and, and Commissioner Tate. So I will say that with all of that and, and because of the eleventh hour piece on this, that where I would land on this is to approve the project with the cafe as the community amenity. I do think it's a great opportunity for us as a commission to, to revisit or to take a look at the intent as both Commissioner Tate, Commissioner Barnes were heavily involved in Connect Memo. I followed. And, and I, I hope as a city council is relooking at this. We've been frustrated by that community amenities list. I hope they can move quickly because we've got a lot of these coming before us. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarty. If I could make a suggestion, I mean, I certainly see two points here. One is making sure it's a community amenity that serves residents and local employees. And the other is, you know, there's, although there has been continued objection in the reviews to the concept of a cafe, that has not been the predominant view and you have not been asked by a majority of the commission to replace the cafe. And this is indeed the eleventh hour. And frankly, as commission chair, I would have difficulty entertaining a, any substantive redirection at this point. However, the concept of it serving residents and employees, I think is still a bit unresolved because we don't have a restaurant program. We don't have a cafe proposal, a cafe owner, a prototype or even intentions as to what would be served. I, I mean, I have been to cafes in housing complexes that were open somewhere around four hours a day, served, served coffee and wrapped goods like the counter at a gas station. I've also been to cafes where you can get a hot locally made breakfast. You can get coffee and decent pastries all day. You can get a hot and locally made lunch up until four P M. And when these cafes are, are known, they are frequented even sometimes when they're in office complexes. Once a week, I used to go to such a cafe in Santa Clara from probably three quarters of a mile away. And speaking three quarters of a mile, this cafe wouldn't readily be serving Bellhaven because it's sort of on the wrong side of the R M U B to do that, but it would be serving Haven Avenue and North Fair Oaks as nearby residential communities. And it would certainly be serving the new residents of the three or more projects that we will have approved over the last 12 months. And it will be serving employees of the Bohannon buildings, which are close enough to be worth a 10 or 12 minute walk to the cafe. So I think perhaps the answer here is a clarification that this cafe will be actively serving the community and is not just a, a placeholder. And I don't think that's an unfair request at this point. So I'll I'll return to Mr. Cadavar and ask what you think about that.
Absolutely. And I've been sort of talking about this for some time now. It's, you know, one of the concepts at play here is the lack of essential services in this general area. And we talked, I think, a couple of sessions ago that it, it's almost a collective responsibility of every project to contribute to that. So these type of community serving retail spaces, if everybody provides it, it's a win-win for the broader future neighborhood. So our intention here absolutely is to make this a viable cafe, and that's what the operating parameters in, of the resolution point out, what, what, what the hours are. It will bring vibrancy to the whole frontage of our property, right? The, the, this cafe is really tied in sign in tandem with that open, open space. So that's our frontage and this is really central to it. So to have it be a placeholder doesn't benefit the neighborhood, doesn't benefit the, the buildings. That's not our intent at all.
Right. It doesn't appear. I'm sorry. It doesn't appear you have the kitchen space to be a Barone Cafe. But that's sort of the implication. And certainly those kind of hours and the frontage that you have, it, it would seem it might actually be possible. They the work community will need a gathering place. So you mentioned that the hours are mentioned. I thought you said the hours are mentioned in the proposal and I obviously glossed over that. Can, can you tell me what that is?
They, the, I had said, we, we had proposed the hours be whatever consistent with whatever the mental park regulations are at the time. And then I believe that the staff had put in a window, which I don't have immediately in, in, in front of me. I don't know if staff has quick access to it. I can try and find it.
Yeah. So according to the operating covenant for the cafe, that is page A fifty-seven of the staff report, the hours of operation would be from seven A M to seven P M, Monday through Friday, and eight A M to one P M, Saturday and Sunday.
All right. So that's not just permitted hours, but that is, that is designated hours?
Correct.
All right. That, that is certainly more than I expected.
Just to clarify though, a clarifying question, that is for the first year and then it is at the discretion of the operator. Is that correct? After the first year?
After the first year, if the operator finds that, you know, the hours are too long or not long enough, they can apply a change with the community development director who will have the authority to authorize the change after first year's operation with reasonable reasons why the changes required.
All right. Well, congratulations to staff for wording it with some care. So, yeah, Mr. Kale.
Thank you. I just wanted to weigh in briefly. Surprisingly, surprisingly, this is the first time I've seen this project. I think the two meetings I was out were the two times we were here. This project was here and the first meeting was before my time. So I'll just be brief and I think that's a very handsome building. It fits the site well. And I'm looking forward to it. And the only other comment is I would, if I am to weigh in on the cafe, I would think that a cafe would not be high on my list of, of amenities, but I appreciate that it's there. I, I hope it's a large enough space. It's sub seven hundred and something square feet to, to do well. I appreciate the hours that go into the evening. So I think it's highly approvable and I think we should move forward with it.
All right. Thank you. And I would like to ask Mr. Barnes if the clarification on the hours and the intent expressed by the applicant, is it all persuasive?
So I appreciate the value of a cafe. And I think as a commercial endeavor in this building, should the applicant choose to have a cafe as something they want to operate and provide as a tenant amenity to improve the leasability of their spaces, to improve the vibrancy of their building so as to enjoy occupancy rates. I think that is much in line with what we're trying to do here. I think what is getting conflated, in my opinion, is community benefit versus tenant amenity. And I think this a hundred percent qualifies as a tenant amenity. I think for this building, it's accretive to the occupancy and the leasability of the spaces. I do not think that, that it, and I think conflating that with community benefit is, is different. I think the geographical location of this building, I think the assertion that because it's on the list, it should be applied across all location within the Connect Menlo area. And I think that's, that's inaccurate. I think the community amenities need to be tailored for the particular location. So for that reason, I don't think it's a community benefit. So it doesn't, what they do to make this commercially viable, I think is good on the applicant for having a vibrant space. But again, none of that is, is still goes to a community benefit of the, so the, the thesis behind community benefits is to ameliorate the impacts of said development on the pre-existing population, right? And then secondarily, new inhabitants of the area. I don't see that this satisfies the amelioration of impacts on the pre-existing residents who will be impacted by development. I don't think it crosses that bar for this location, for this particular area. And I don't, and look, I, I have no, no juice on whether anyone else agrees with me on this or not, but I do take slight umbrage at this being the eleventh hour because I have talked about it before. I don't believe anyone, I wasn't even paying attention because it's not my, my role is not to be persuasive. My role is simply to, to express what I see. And I didn't believe back then. I don't believe it's now. And I don't, I don't, I don't want to shy away from disagreeing with something because of a last minute, because it's not the last minute. This is even, we talk like this, and this is when you talk about these things prior approval as opposed to after approval. So for that reason, good on these folks who put in a cafe there. It just doesn't rise community benefit for me. And I, you know, and I guess I would say as, as, as chair, you had noted Commissioner Riggs earlier that you wouldn't look for redirection of the project. And I don't know that that's your prerogative at this, you know, as the chair to do that. So I will state that it just, this is how I feel about it. It doesn't change my point of view, but then I thank the, I think the other commissioners and the applicant for putting in their two cents on this. So I'll let that, um, let there be my last comment on this. Thank you.
Fair enough. And that gathering our comments is what we are here for. Mr. DeCarty.
Yeah, I just want to thank Commissioner Barnes for his, his comments and his engagement in this way this evening. And I, I would concur with your last assessment about your point of view on the eleventh hour. I will say that, that for me and, and not trying to, to vote count here, but why I raise the point is that we are missing two commissioners. And I think that puts us in a different place as a commission. We've had this conversation about cafes before in other contexts. But when we have seven commissioners here, we, we move projects forward in that kind of way. So I, my only comment is that I, I don't think it's, it's okay essentially. I could imagine, I could imagine getting to, to two to three on something this evening, but I actually don't think it's okay in this instance. Because we're missing two other commissioners here. So that was my reference to the eleventh hour and to the unique construct of who happens to be here this evening. So that was my reference to the 11th hour and to the unique construct of who happens to be here this evening. But I don't want to take away at all, and I didn't mean to cause umbrage to you, Commissioner Barnes. You don't need to comment back, I just wanted to say that and to thank you for your engagement in this way.
Ms. Tate?
So a question for the applicant here. So of community members who felt that this, the cafe would be a community benefit for Bell Haven, how many people did you actually talk to? And what are your numbers on that? You know, who thought that it would be something that they would actually patronize and felt that it was a benefit for the community of Bell Haven?
So I don't, I didn't go around asking people that they would frequent the cafe. The process that I described earlier is how we got to the cafe. It started with staff really heavily encouraging it, and I think there are some people here that could verify that. And then us presenting it in these public forums and listening to the feedback. And I agree with Commissioner Barnes that he certainly brought it up before. I didn't mean to imply by saying 11th hour, but at no point was the impression given to us that we were going down the wrong path, that we shouldn't do what staff is directing us, that we shouldn't go and negotiate and finalize with Community Development Director. So the people that I mentioned earlier are the people that I was, thought was representative of those voices, of, like I said, Pamela Jones, which was very positive. And that was my signal of, okay, we're headed down the right path. And Commissioner Kennedy. And I've mentioned this before, I know, I said it before, not everybody in the commission agrees with the cafe. I acknowledge that, actually, I don't know if it came out this last time or the time before. I'm always well aware that it wasn't unanimous, everybody's for the cafe. But at no point was the indication that I'm gonna kill the deal over it, right? I thought it was, okay, everybody, Commissioner Tate, you've said numerous times about the multiple income levels. That's not an easy thing to do, there's a reason we're the only project that's done it. So in our calculation, it's, let's make sure everybody gets something that's important to them. And this cafe, frankly, is getting blown out of proportion. It is 10% of the community amenity value, if you take out the surplus. That's one way to think about it. And we're here, we're four years into it, looking to actually move forward with this project, get a building permit. So I don't know where that leaves us, if I have to go back to the drawing board. And again, there are people that wanted it, and what I thought I was doing was responding to hot buttons of everybody.
Okay, and you're right, and I did state earlier that I really do appreciate what you've done with the BMR. However, when you mentioned that you spoke to community members, and this was something that they felt was suitable amenity, I guess I was hoping or thinking that maybe you had spoken to more people other than one community member who gave the nod saying, yes, this is something that looks like a community amenity for Bell Haven residents. And I say that because that's important when you drop that you've talked to people in the community. And then also, it was mentioned on, you know, in this forum before about the cafe. So if, so I guess I don't really understand your point, because you were saying that you thought you were hitting the right hot buttons because you heard from other people. Well, Chair, excuse me, Commissioner Barnes was the only person who objected initially, and then you only have one community member who is pro. I totally get that staff was pushing this along, but it just, it just doesn't feel right, and especially since I did sit on the General Plan Advisory Commission, and it was very specific that the amenities were for Bell Haven residents, and this, I agree, would be a community amenity for your tenants and for other communities, as Chair Riggs called out, meaning North Fair Oaks and, I guess, Bourbon Park and Haven area, but not for Bell Haven.
Yeah, and listen, I'm not suggesting that this is, you know, Bell Haven, it's targeted towards Bell Haven necessarily. I also don't think, it's a six-minute bike ride from Chillicothe and Terminal. Over time, maybe when this area gets bigger, there will, you know, there will be more flow, but I'm not in any way suggesting like this is specifically for Bell Haven. I'm not, I'm not playing games, like, that's just not what we're... What I'm saying is, as part of what we thought we were doing in this whole area, is kind of expanding Bell Haven, that these essential services, I was always led to believe was one of the biggest complaints, is that there aren't these basic services throughout this whole area. And the operating assumption was that everybody chip away at it, everybody brings something to the table, and eventually the Bell Haven gets bigger, and this is viewed as a bigger community, and this is one of those things, as opposed to just this, like, the view right now is this, we're building this building, and that's it. And how is Bell Haven going to come over there? I'm looking at it as the whole area is going to be expanding, and everybody's contributing to it. So I'm, I guess I'm looking at it as a net positive over a longer period of time, if that makes sense. But the analysis that I'm hearing is, you know, when this building is built, it's really not doing much for Bell Haven. And the other aspect that's surprising to me is that I heard that ad, you know, you weren't for it, but I'd never got the sense that it was, if you looked at the totality of things, that this in and of itself would make you not want to do the project. If that's a fair statement, if, you know, I can get some kind of sense of, was I misunderstanding?
If I may speak for a minute, what I see here is a project sponsored someone by someone with consistent and good intentions, who has responded to our general requirements, our zoning requirements, and our rather specific requirements, including a list formed in 2016 from which he and staff have to choose amenities. We don't, unfortunately, we weren't left with a lot of flexibility. I was, one of the few efforts that I have not been on was the Connect Menlo effort. I had significant reservations about the whole effort and the result. But I'm left here with a list that I, as I mentioned earlier, I find lacking. I find that it lacks at least one, and undoubtedly more than one, element that were expressed quite strongly by the community, and that it was somewhat filtered. I have trouble faulting this project for including an amenity that doesn't serve Bell Haven when their project is at the opposite end of the RMU district from Bell Haven. So even if they provided the long-awaited pharmacy, it would be in the wrong end of this development to be said to serve Bell Haven. So if, on the other hand, it becomes a cafe-Barone kind of destination, I do hope that the maybe 20-minute ride from, say, Sevier, maybe 25-minute ride from Sevier to the location would be worth a late lunch or a meeting with somebody from Redwood City. And I would not want to... I would not try to add more specific expectations other than, as it says in the approved amenities list, it should serve community and employees. I don't fully agree that this is entirely a project resident-serving amenity, since it's a residential building. And while residential buildings have been pretty much full for the last 13 months, I don't anticipate that that is going to be the future. There will be a point when we're all vaccinated, there will be a point when we feel that we've pretty much had enough of being in the living room seven days a week. And there will be a point when people go back to work and are expected to go back to work, and the interplay of employees in the same space and possessing each other has been mentioned in a recent article regarding the likelihood of our shift back to using offices, which of course will be reflected in traffic. So I, I can see how this is not perfect, but I would like to say that I think this has been done with good faith and rather well-done, and that this cafe has good potential. Mr. Kadavari, you had another comment? Audio?
Oh, sorry, just further to Commissioner Tate's question about sort of other people in the community, and I think Rachel Bakerstaff is also someone that is supportive of the cafe. And again, I, you know, given her role of Bell Haven Action, I look to those as representative of groups of people, or, yeah, people that I know that I kind of look to to get opinions. So she's been supportive as well, so I just wanted to share that also.
Okay, that's great. And Chair Riggs, you made the comparison of this, of the cafe and the pharmacy, and those are two different things completely. A pharmacy is a necessity. No, you said that it would be on the wrong end, so it wouldn't be accessible to Bell Haven residents. Pharmacy is a necessity, a cafe is a luxury, that's an option. So those are two different things, that's not something that would be comparable.
I'm just noting the location, nothing more than that. You could say it's a gas station.
You were talking about the location, or maybe I misunderstood. So if a pharmacy was there, people would come, because it's a necessity. A cafe is not a necessity for me, that's something that's extra.
So the importance of it helps define whether or not it serves the community. I can follow that.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, well, we've certainly laid out some reservations. But...
Can I ask to the Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I apologize, you were in the middle of a sentence.
Well, I was going to invite that this is probably the right time for us to vote on the project. And I am willing to take, as Mr. Barnes suggested, I'm willing to pull out an element of the, of the five categories that we're to respond to tonight. Or not, as someone may want to make a motion. But Mr. DeCarty, you had a comment first? Okay. All right, well...
I appreciate that, Chair Riggs. If you're willing to entertain that collegial courtesy, I certainly would welcome that, to the extent possible, thank you.
Would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I would, and I've got seven elements that we are, I believe, based on the staff report weighing in on, but I'd like to, through the Chair, query staff as to the way to break this down. And I will say that, for staff's reference, and I guess this is Mr. Prada, I'm looking at the conclusion of the staff report on page 21, and literally the last line of the conclusion calls out seven elements that we are appearing to be voting on. And is it possible to do six? Pull out one, the community amenities agreement, and vote on that separately? Or how does that work from a mechanic standpoint? And I think Chair Riggs, you're shaking your head, that is what I would like to ask for. Is that something that's in line with what you'd be amenable to?
Mr. Prada, and no, I wasn't shaking my head, go ahead.
So I'm actually gonna turn this over to our city attorney, who's also available, and can answer that technical question in terms of parsing out different entitlements and actions.
Thank you, hello everyone, Neera Doherty, City Attorney. As far as parsing out the operating covenant, the community amenities agreement that I believe you're all referring to, the project as proposed and planned includes the cafe space and includes the operation of a cafe as a condition of issuance of the use permit. And so pulling back on approving the operating covenant will not undo the approval of the community amenity. The community amenity sort of has two pieces to it in this project. One is the actual physical space that's included in the proposed plans that are before you tonight. And then one is the operation of the proposed space as a cafe. And under the current community amenities ordinances and the list that applies to community amenities adopted by the city council, both the act, both the physical space and the operation of the space as a cafe are eligible... Well, I should restate that, both the physical space and the operation of the space may be part of the community amenities proposal. The community amenities agreement that you're referring to just speaks to the operating piece of the community amenity. And we probably need to hear from both planning staff and the applicant as to whether or not, based on the plans and the approvals that are before you tonight, you could pull out the cafe from the proposal, from the project as a whole. I do not think you could approve, and again, I'll defer to technical planning experts on this, but I think it would be difficult to structure an approval tonight that approved the plans without the community amenity space, because as you've seen in your presentation this evening, it's that the space itself is a part of the larger project plans.
Well, that was, sorry, Mr. Prada, but the ball has been punted back to your side of the field.
But before I make, punt it back to Kyle, let me add that I do think you could pull out the operating provisions of the community amenity space, but the applicant would need to speak to whether or not the physical space would accommodate a different operation that would be consistent with the community amenities list. And so with that, I will pass it over to staff.
Oh, well, I think I already have a response in my mind, but Mr. Prada, please.
Sure, so just to kind of add to that, there's a couple things. The, when you're talking about the plans, the architectural control component, that's just one of the actions. There is also the use permit, which, not just for the modifications to some of the design standards, but also the allowance of bonus level development, which is predicated upon the community amenities meeting the minimum required community amenities value, right? So from the appraisal, 50% of the increased value at bonus level. And so if you pulled the cafe out, you would then be below that agreed-upon threshold, first off. So then, to our city attorney's comments, there could be a discussion about modifying that amenity that could happen now. Ultimately, staff would need to consider whether or not we could make that change here, or if it need to be re-noticed, a new public hearing, depending on the extent of the change and recommendations. So that would be one thing to consider as well, is that... A new public hearing uh depending on the extent of the change and recommendations, so that would be one thing to consider as well is that. We may not be able to make a wholesale change um unless it's very consistent. So that's that's one thing to consider as as part of our noticing outreach process. That may necessitate that again, so with that, I'll 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 stop and then happy to answer any questions.
Well, Mr. Prada. If I'm right, we don't actually have the option to continue this to a fifth hearing. Just one moment, Mr. DeCarty, and I'll be there.
Yes, let me let me ask that, so. The 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 project itself uh is not. An SP three thirty project, there was not a, we don't have a preliminary application. It does contain some other aspects that. Make it so it's it's not necessarily a SP three thirty project with the five meeting limit. Let's sort of answer your question in terms of the meeting limit that that's not in place.
All right, so that is an option, Mr. DeCarty.
I can't imagine we want to continue this to another hearing. In the spirit of trying to trying to meet the spirit, I think of what Commissioner Barnes is asking and then how we're trying to move forward here. Would it be possible? To. Is there a way we can have a precursor vote, which essentially is? Does the commission believe that the community amenity? As laid out in its entirety in. Linked through the various elements of this proposal. Meets the standard. For. Community amenities or best use of community amenities, I I would leave it to Commissioner Barnes to craft it the way that he might see fit. I meet the standard for community amenities um for Menlo Park. And to be able to. Vote on that. Get that taken care of. And then go ahead and take it the full vote so that it offers an opportunity for. Commissioner who wants to go on record as being. Not supportive of the community amenity, but then could go ahead and potentially vote on the whole project. I'm just trying to find a pathway through. Um that can meet the spirit of what I understood Commissioner Barnes to be asking for.
I I'm open to that, and I think part of uh what we do need to do tonight. Uh as I'm seeing pieces fall into place is to. Advise counsel of the conflict within this group. So, Mr. Barnes, um. You were going to respond.
Well, I was, uh so a part of me was like, look, I'll just be happy to dissent on the vote when it comes back up. But I I really, really appreciate Commissioner DeCarty's. Creativity and willingness to take, so. There's a part of me that's like, look, folks, I don't want to belabor this any longer. I see clearly that this is an approvable project, I've got an issue with the community amenities. Uh and I was gonna say, let's not belabor this point anymore, however. If Commissioner Chairman Riggs, if you are able to fairly. Uh with a high level dexterity, move that initial vote that Commissioner DeCarty had had mentioned through the process, have the vote, get it over with, and we can move on. I I would I would appreciate that if it's if it's not too labor intensive. So part of me, so that's just, I'm kind of, I'm shy, I mean, I'm like, holy act, this is causing all this. Extra time with our meeting, but at the same time, I'd be appreciative if it's a fairly straightforward path to do that two vote, two step.
I think it is, I think it's within our prerogative, and I also think that you're not the only voice that wants to be heard of. With concern about um this particular item, I'm sorry, did I hear a voice?
Yeah, that was that was me, the city attorney, um let me just clarify that a vote on the community amenity. Um would be a motion for purposes of just clarifying. Um people's position on the amenity, not as an actual approval of the man amenity.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in assess, in the sense it's a straw vote. But it it uh does go on our record of minutes. All right, so.
As not as not an an action on the project, because we're not taking an action on the project before we certify the EIR.
No, we will do that subsequently. So uh. The suggestion has been made that we. Vote. On the on whether the cafe is proposed. And please correct me or edit me as needed. Whether the cafe is proposed. Meets the. Intent of the community amenities ordinance section. So do I have a motion on? That question?
And may I tweak that a bit to say, just is it appropriate for this site? Is how I would frame it in terms, is this is this the right community amenity for this project? Uh because I don't have a problem with the community amenities list and in this document, I just have a problem with this amenity for this site.
All right, well, given that it's a straw boat, it should reflect what you mean to question, Ms. Tate, is that similar to what you would like to question?
Yes.
All right. Uh can, may I consider that a motion, Mr. Barnes, on the floor?
Yes, please.
All right, then I'll ask for a second.
I will second that.
Well, no, you made the motion, so uh Ms. Tate makes the second. Um, all right, any comments before we vote? Mr. DeCarty.
Uh so I just want to. Uh reflect that I'm gonna I'm gonna vote in the affirmative that this is okay for this project and this site. But frankly, only because we don't have a full set of commissioners here this evening, um and so I appreciate your point, Chair Riggs, which is. Um and I'm hugely supportive of the way I think this is gonna go, to send a signal to the city council. Um about concern and the differences of opinion in this um group. And to reinforce the necessary action for city council to get us an updated communities amenities list. To feel more satisfied, the community as constituted now is behind that list. And options that feel like they can work better for future projects, so I just wanted to note that because I'm gonna end up voting differently than what I just said, thank you.
All right, but I very much appreciate uh your suggestion, Mr. K. Uh microphone.
Thank you, can you just clarify what the straw vote is we're doing again?
Yes, the vote is. Whether the cafe is proposed. Is an appropriate community amenity, quote unquote, for this site.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so uh. We will vote, Mr. Barnes. Your your.
The motion has to be that it's not. A. It it it, so my motion is that it's not inappropriate community amenity for this site, so to that, I'm obviously voting yes.
Oh, all right, and Ms. Tate, that's how you understood the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Uh is not, and let me go to my notes. And Mr. DeCarty?
I'll vote no.
And Mr. Kale?
Yes.
Yes, it is not appropriate.
Correct.
And Ms. Tate?
Yes.
Yes, it is not appropriate. And uh I will vote. No, I don't have sufficient uh objection to this um. So. Uh the vote is. Three to two that this is not an appropriate um. We get this right. This is not an appropriate community amenity for this site.
Correct.
All right, so. Having accomplished that. Do I have a motion? On the. Elements of our public hearing. Which are for the use permit, architectural control, BMR housing agreement, community amenities agreement, environmental review. Or EIR. For one eleven independent strife. Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I'll move that we uh uh vote to approve as presented in the staff report.
And uh second. I will second the motion um. To approve per the overall project per the staff report. So, Mr. Barnes?
May I say, for the record, I uh like this project and I uh. I am in support of all the pieces of it, with the exception of the community amenities agreement, so I will be. Voting against it solely on that grounds.
Oh, so you're voting against the project?
That's correct.
And Mr. DeCarty?
I'll vote for.
And Mr. Kale?
I'm voting for it.
And Ms. Tate?
Sorry, I just had to process that for a second. Um. I like the project uh as well. But I just, I can't go with with the amenity, so I'm gonna vote um. No.
No, on the project based on the.
On the.
Seven hundred square foot amenities.
Yes.
Okay. All right, and. I will vote in the affirmative. I think the overall project is impressive. And while there is. Debate about one element. That element was resolved uh. Through. The process. Through staff and through the documents at hand. And it's hard to ask an applicant to do too much more than that. So the motion passes by three to two. With.
Through the chair.
Members missing, yes, Mr. Prada.
The motion actually fails in this case, uh we need four members to vote in the affirmative on the project, so this actually constitutes. At a denial of the project.
I'm sorry, but I would just like to verify that, my understanding is that it is the majority of the commissioners present. If it constitutes a quorum. Would you? Like to take a moment and and check?
I will, I was under the impression it was of the voting members as a whole, which make four, but uh let me let me double.
I don't, I don't believe so.
Government code three six nine three six, and it's a. Quorum of the members of the body to adopt a resolution taking action, and so a three two would be a denial. Of the application.
I I'm I'm sorry, I didn't follow what you just said, a quorum of the body which is present. Needs to have a majority vote.
That's right, so.
And the majority, we just voted three to two affirmation.
Chair Chair Riggs, if you, if if I may. Government code three six nine three six. Provides that in order to approve a resolution. Taking an action such as the one presented to the planning commission this evening. A majority of the entire body, not a majority of those present, must vote in the affirmative.
Oh, okay, I I am corrected, thank you. Then the motion fails. We do not have an approval of the project tonight. Do I have another motion? Mr. Barnes?
So going back to uh um city attorney. In the event that that motion fails, right? The next motion, I can make another motion. To uh to approve the project, we can do repetitive motions in this case, is that correct? So if that fails, could I in turn? Uh make a motion to approve the project subsequent to that one?
That was a, the motion that was just on the table was a motion to approve the project. As proposed in the staff report, so you're asking can a an identical motion be made again?
Right, given given an experience we had a previous, yes, so that's that's assured, given that's a failed motion, another motion can be re-presented. Uh that would, so another motion for approval can be re-presented, correct?
I need to actually ask for a five minute recess to review the city council procedures on that question. I I am actually not certain whether or not an identical motion can be made.
Can I ask a, before you take the five minute recess, can I ask a question for you to consider during that recess?
Mr. DeCarty, yes.
Could I make a motion? That was exactly the same. Except in the staff report to change the capital T on page three to a lowercase t on page three?
No, that would be substantively identical motion.
If you, let me allow me to ask this question, so the next motion that would have to happen is a motion for denial, and if there's. What if there's not a motion for denial?
Are you asking me or the chair?
I'm sorry, I'm asking.
To you, uh through the chair.
Oh, through the chair, I'm sorry, a a motion to deny would be a new motion, and you can certainly make that motion.
But in the absence of that, is that? So I'll let you go on your five minute resets, but I I remember when we have another project, it required a motion to after, there was the motion. Not to approve it, there was a required motion to deny.
No, that's not required here, a failure to approve the motion, adopting the resolution, including certification of the ER and the various entitlements. Would be a denial and no subsequent motion is needed in order to confirm that the motion did not pass. What I what I would like to review right now is whether the city. Has any reconsideration options, because I'm hearing the commission potentially looking for a reconsideration option. Typically, those uh occur. Can't occur immediately after, but there's some sort of twenty four hour waiting period. Um so that's what I would like to go back and and review right now.
So through the chair, if we can. Take a five minute recess and then reconvene. It would that be acceptable?
Uh, yes, it is, and may I ask um? If Ms. Doherty could share her uh email with me so that I could send her a document?
Yes, no problem.
All right.
You ready for it?
Yes.
It's N D O H. E R T Y. At B W S law dot com.
B W S, it's Sam?
That's right, B as in boy, W as in water, L as in Larry, S as in Sam. Law dot com.
And I apologize, start from the beginning again?
Sure, it's N as in Nancy, D as in Dorothy. O H as in Harry, E. R as in Rebecca, T as in Tom, Y. At B W S law dot com.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so uh is it five minutes we asked for? Or do you need more? Ms. Doherty, uh is is five minutes sufficient, or do you need ten?
Five minutes is fine.
Okay, wonderful, we will reconfirm, con convene at nine thirty six PM. Please stay on Zoom and uh feel free to turn off your audio during this time. Thank you.
Mr. Riggs, can we, is it permissible to step away from the dais to get water?
Absolutely, yeah, I just meant don't close the the Zoom, because that could be problematic.
Thank you.
Absolutely. By the way, Mr. Tapia, are you present? By the way, Mr. Tapia, are you present?
Yes, Chair Riggs, I'm here in the background. Chair, I think you turned off your microphone.
Yes, I did. On my screen, the raised hand is yellow and is in the bottom bar of my screen. Would that be as likely true for non-participants?
I believe that is the case. It should just be, I think theirs is a more simplified version of the screen that we're seeing, but theirs should just have the ability to have the hand feature.
Yeah, I wanted to describe its location and color more accurately since they were different in our before we came back to Zoom, go to meeting, I think, added up on the right and maybe was, was green?
I can definitely, I can definitely double-check in the background, just to confirm the location of that.
Well, maybe for next time, since we don't have any more need for it right now, but I, I hate to I hate to leave the millions of people watching our meeting uh, in a false direction. I feel that the, the publisher's rule applies, which is that your guilt is multiplied by the number of people you tell.
Understood.
Alright, so I will step away as well for the next three minutes. Alright, our time has passed. Uh, do we have a quorum, dare I ask? Yes, I see everyone present. That was present earlier. So, Ms. Doherty, I think the floor is yours.
Thank you, I appreciate the five-minute recess, Chair Riggs. I've reviewed the city council procedures which apply to the Planning Commission, absent Planning Commission specific procedures. Um, and on page 17, voting procedures of those procedures. Um, there is a section that regulates reconsideration of motions previously made. That section provides that the city council, or in this case, the Planning Commission has determined that any motion for reconsideration should be made at the meeting immediately following that at which the action was taken. That section does not provide that a reconsiderment reconsideration motion must be made at the, at the subsequent meeting. So my reading would be that um, if the Planning Commission wishes to reconsider its vote at this meeting, it may do so. Um, though the policy is that a reconsideration is preferred at a subsequent meeting. The policies also provide that the prevailing majority um, uh, someone from the prevailing majority must be the one to make a motion for reconsideration. In this case, the majority did not prevail due to a lack of um, seven members present at the Planning Commission. So my reading of that section would be that those who voted um, in the three or voted to adopt the resolution approving the project, um, one of those commissioners would need to make the motion to reconsider. So as, 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 in summary, um, this is how a motion to reconsider would work if the Planning Commission opts to do it right now. Um, one of the commissioners who voted to approve the project would make a motion to reconsider, along with a, would make a motion to reconsider, there would be a vote on the motion to reconsider. Um, a majority vote on that motion would prevail. Then a subsequent vote could be taken on the underlying action to approve the project again. Al alternatively, um, you could combine those two into a single vote. Um, the rules both in the city council uh, procedures as well as general reconsideration um, procedures from Robert, Robert's Rules of Order would allow for that.
Ms. Doherty, could I just one, clarify one thing for the record?
Please.
You said uh, that a member of the majority voting for the project would have to make the motion. Did you mean that um, a prevailing majority member, since actually we ended up voting against the project, would make that motion?
Yeah, and I think it's, it's not totally clear based on how the procedures are drafted, what to do in a circumstance where a majority of those present um, are voting do not prevail. And so my reading would be um, that those in the majority of the vote, so those who are in the three would need to make the motion to reconsider.
Alright, so Mr. Barnes, as a member of the majority, you would be in that position, and you indicated a few minutes ago you might like to call for a vote. Can, uh, do you want to make a motion to reconsider that we could vote on?
Yeah, well, prior to doing that, there was a little bit of mental jujitsu there, and I, I'll take, I'll take our um, city councils. I'm not sure I can entirely follow how, how the two is the majority over the three, but I think.
No, we corrected that. That was a misstatement, we corrected that.
Okay.
So you, as a member of the three, for example.
Uh, but it wasn't, but I, I'm sorry, but I wasn't.
Yeah, through the chair, he's, that's not, I don't believe that's the right way we're doing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misread the vote, uh, after having been corrected, yes. So, um, you're quite right, so um, either I or Mr. Kale or Mr. DeCarty would have to make a motion for a revote. Thank you.
That's right.
Alright, Mr. DeCarty?
I moved to reconsider, and would put the same motion before that I did previously, which is to prove the staff report as submitted.
Alright, and I will second.
May, may I make a statement, Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, of course.
So I want to thank my fellow commissioners for following that, following me down this path of the community amenities. My intent is not to, at least my personal intent was not to derail the project in its totality, because I tend to be a pragmatist. Pragmatist over over anything else. So while I fundamentally disagree with the community amenity selection, uh, it is not a hill that I uh, would choose to die, that I choose to die on. So for that reason, and I apologize to Commissioner to, of this, so I will uh, so that was my statement. For what it's worth. Thank you. And I'm sorry, you asked me for my vote, so my, you just asked me for my vote, Commissioner Riggs?
I was about to ask you for your vote.
Okay. So thank you for that. Uh, I am gonna vote, uh, yes on the project.
Alright, thank you.
Through the chair, can I just clarify one thing real quick that occurred to me while we were in the recess? The previous vote was on the project as recommend the staff report, and I just want to confirm that that is taken into account the edits that Pyle read into the record uh, on the resolution earlier. I'm seeing a thumbs up from Commissioner DeCarty, so I had assumed so, but I, I've taken this opportunity to verify. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And by the way, we are voting to reconsider. After which we will vote on the project.
Uh, my motion and your second was on putting them both together.
Correct, that's my understanding.
Alright. I'm quite happy to have one step rather than two, especially since our city attorney has indicated that we can do that. This project. Okay, so continuing, uh, did I ask for Mr. DeCarty's vote?
It's a yes.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kale?
Yes.
And Ms. Tate?
So I just want to state that I too appreciate the rest of the project, and I wasn't trying to derail the whole thing either, but I, I still where I stand as far as the uh, community amenity, but I vote yes.
Alright, thank you. And I will vote yes. So we have did someone say rollercoaster? Uh, we have a vote of five to zero and approval of the project as presented in the staff report with the amendments introduced by Ms. Baggett. That concludes this hearing. On 111 Independence. Again, thank you for a nice project. Uh, and for going through our process. And given the hour, I will move on to our closing actions.
Thanks, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you team, the whole team. That brings us to information items. Um, so Mr. Prada. What can you tell us?
Uh, thank you. So my information item, I actually discussed earlier with regard to May 10th, the Planning Commission will be considering a recommendation uh, to the city council on the uh, introduction of an ordinance for a community manis in Luffy as part of that study session on the community amenities list that the council had last Tuesday. Um, otherwise, looking forward on that same May 10th meeting, we're, we're looking at a couple other um, commercial projects, um, change of uses uh, in existing buildings, um, small expansion of a of Chevron gas station, I believe, 1200 Community Real. So stay tuned, that'll be on May 10th meeting. And with that, that concludes my reports and announcements or information items.
Alright, uh, are there any statements from, yes, Mr. Barnes?
So I would like to ask Mr. Prada if at some point we could get an update on the project on Willow Road that is right across Willow Cove Gasoline, and it came, but it's a, it's a derelict building. It came before. Can we get some sense of what is gonna happen there? And I do remember that in a previous meeting, there was a discussion of um, and I'm, I'm at a loss for the terminology, but because it is a derelict, hazardous building, a derelict building, uh, it's some enforceable action to get that thing torn down and um, you can't force redevelopment, but you, but the light, then you can get that light out of there. So to extend, at some point, we could get some update on the project, I'd certainly be appreciative.
Certainly, yeah, we can, we can follow up with more details outside the meeting. Um, my understanding is we're waiting on, on the applicant for a resubmit in terms of the project itself, and I'll have to follow up with you separately on the um, code enforcement question. So I'm, I'm happy to take that offline.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes, for raising that issue. Any other comments tonight? Alright, with that, this meeting is adjourned at 9:50 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. Good night, everybody, be well.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night all, and to our city attorney, thank you.